All right, so let's call this meeting to order at seven oh two P M. And it is November first. Congratulations, everybody.
Yep.
Almost up on a year. Okay, so approval of minutes. So did you have a chance to look at the regular minutes from October fourth?
I did. I didn't see anything.
I didn't see anything either. I looked through over.
Julie's awesome.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Perfect. I'd like to also ask. We had a special meeting on October fifth, so can I get a motion to add? The special meeting minutes to the agenda? Did you guys take a look at those?
So moved.
A second. I'm ready there.
Is everyone else there?
Oh, yeah.
Hello?
Yes. Patrick is frozen.
Oh.
Oh.
Back?
Yeah, you were frozen.
Oh, yeah, everybody's. Okay, I'm back. Sorry about that. Everybody just stopped. It's like, oh, what do you know? Look, not good with technical difficulties. Okay, sorry about that. So I don't know where we left off. I just wanted to add this to the agenda.
You asked for a motion for the special meeting. I made a motion. Kim seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. So now we would have an acceptance of those meeting minutes.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of October, special meeting October five.
Awesome. Thank you, Kim.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move to the business. I do not have a tax collector's report, so we are moving on to communications from the public. And I see no one here. Julie, do you have any comments?
No, it's good to see everybody, but no comment.
All right, under board selectmen, commissions and board appointments, we have no change. We are still waiting for conservation and Board of Finance is diligently working with their candidates. And hopefully for next month, we'll have candidates for both. First order of business, Wellers Bridge Forum. So we had thirty-two participants. Over half the participants had seventeen of them reported that rumble strips were an annoyance, noise pollution. I had made kind of a list of, because there were a lot of things that were duplicated, that people had ideas for. One of them was more police enforcement. One-way traffic heading west was brought up. There was feedback that the speed bumps were too small and not effective. Camera enforcement was brought up, although we know that it's not allowable in Connecticut, so that's more of a contact your legislators. People feel that that's a good way to pursue that. More no-through truck signage was brought up. Some of the noise pollution, they said, was also accelerating after the speed bumps was creating more noise. So it was kind of changing the dynamic. It was brought up that between forum to forum, from the first time we had a forum to the second time we had a forum, one accident on Wellers Bridge with minor injuries. There were four accidents on Baker Road with one fatality during that same time. And it was also brought up to lower the speed limit.
In particular, I think on the downward, on the downhill slope of Wellers for the lowering the speed limit on the west, westbound.
So down the hill. Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, downhill side. Um. So. Feedback. Talk about this.
Well, you asked for it. And you got it.
You know, I'm glad we did what we did. I don't think anybody would have known until we tried it. You know, my one, one thing that I, I, you know, we're at November first now, so we said these speed bumps would come up in November. And, you know, one thing that I'm hoping with the removal of the speed bumps is that people won't be driving on the rumble strips to get one wheel off the bump. So I'm hoping that it reduces some of the rumble strip noise, honestly. You know, and we're going to have to monitor the speed. We do have one of our officers is, that's been out, has been picking up more shifts and writing a significant amount of tickets lately, especially in that area, and we're going to continue to do that. And we have another part-timer joining us as well as one more position that we still have available, so we continue to look for another officer. So it's going to be more of a fleet of part-time officers. There's also, we need to keep our eye on Davenport also, now that the road is open. Now that the bridge is open, before school, after school, there's been a lot of complaints on that street previously, so that's going to be another area that we have to monitor moving forward. But I think, you know, we're going to really have to watch this as the speed bumps come up. What does that do to traffic? What does that do to speed? So I'll clip some numbers from now, so then we have a starting point, and then we'll have some numbers, you know, in a few months to see kind of what happens. But once we take up the, the speed bumps, we got a crack filler that's going to go in there, so we don't impair the road as we knew that we would have to do once we removed them.
From the drilled, the drilling?
Yes. Yeah, there were lags. There was the sleeves that went in to hold the bolts, so those have to be filled. Those have to be filled. Yep.
Yeah.
So what are your feelings on what, what you'd like to do?
Well, I'd like to go to a vote, like we said, when we approved this, to have a town vote online. We should stick with, with that.
Got it. A town vote for keeping the speed bumps or installing permanent?
Yeah, remember when we approved it?
Yes.
The compromise was to have a vote, see what all the people in town think, and limited to two votes for household and like we did for the dog park.
Oh, I could do it as a online.
Online, yeah.
Actually get more participants that way.
Right.
You're right.
Like we did for the dog park, and we're surprised by that result, so.
Right.
I think speeding is a big problem everywhere, and we, I, I'm not in favor of closing, you know, making the road a one-way, closing it at the green. It's noise pollution. I'm sure if we put noise monitors up, it's not over eighty-five decibels. So, you know, we need to have the facts straight. It's a main artery of our town, and we need to accept that. It doesn't mean that we just ignore the people's speed, but I think what the Board of Selectmen have been doing and stepping up enforcement and giving people tickets is the way to go, for me, anyway. On the speed bumps, a lot of people who work in my office in Sandy Hook, also, they live in New Milford. And they claim that, you know, they slow you down if you're going forty or thirty-five. Nobody wants to go over them at that. But they do slow up for them, and but if you go over them at thirty, it's just boom, boom. You know, it's not a big deal.
Are you talking about at the green, at the green? In New Milford?
No, no, on, on, no, they, my, the staff that I work with lives in New Milford.
Oh, yeah, so.
So they use Wellers Bridge Road a lot.
Oh, Wellers Bridge, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I've gotten a lot of their input on what do you think of this, and, you know, a lot of them say I go on the rumble strips just to, just to make a statement that, you know, but we didn't want the rumble strips. The Board of Selectmen voted for it way back when. I think if we had a revote, it wouldn't have happened, but it happened. And we're not going to, I, I hope you agree, we're not going to spend sixty grand on fixing that. And I don't know why people go over them, because there's plenty of wide road to, to miss that. So that's my feeling is we asked for it, we didn't really come up with a better solution, other than the solution we've always been pursuing, and that is heavy enforcement. But we should have a vote. We said we would, and we should see what that comes up, and that, that may solve a lot of this issue.
And I would, my only point would be that it almost seemed like, you know, now that we exhausted that and we tried it, I think the same people that wanted it don't want it now. So I don't know that it's gonna, if anything, I think we have more support for not, you know, not having them. I don't, but again, leaving it up to the people and leaving it up to a survey, I guess we'll know.
Well, and we voted for that, you know, so I don't want to rescind that.
Of course. Okay.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, and I think that originally, you know, when people were thinking about these speed bumps, or they were thinking, and I think we were too, more about a speed table, and I think it would have been a different experience in some instances in terms of the location of where they are, where they were, the size, but I think, a couple of things. One, I agree, it's going to be interesting to see how people feel once they're gone. You know, what it sounds like, what it feels like to be on the road, and then the monitoring of the speed. I would like to, at some point, see something permanent that reminds people that there is a four-way stop at the top. So I just watched someone today just go, you know, right by again, and, you know, thankfully I was stopped, and I wait because I don't know what's going to happen, you know, whether there is a walkway there, you know, I just, I just don't, I don't know that we've investigated, you know, the possibilities for something that would help.
Well, we do have the blinking stop signs, and I will say, as of yesterday, there was somebody that flew right through the stop sign in front of the green. Like, without hesitation, speeding through, not a tap of the brakes, just flew through it. And it's happening in front of my house, and that you would think was a little bit more dangerous even, because there's offset intersection.
Yeah, I saw that last night on Halloween. It's crazy.
Yes, last night, last night was where I saw it, somebody just flew right through, not even a tap of the brakes. Yep, so it definitely is everywhere.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. We should put speed bumps for the stop sign. I mean, good ones.
Yes, decent, something that would, that people go, oh, because I think it's, and as I said before in an earlier meeting, I think it's, I feel that it's helped at the top of the hill, you know, when people are coming up and they go, right, there's something going to happen. I think on the west, westerly side, I was in the field on the horse, and I heard the speeding up. It was totally irritating. I can understand. And that's, it's the only location that that one could be in, though, you know, and that's a tough side of the road. So maybe it's, there's, you know, not three, there's, ends up being one or two placed somewhere. I don't know, but I, I was investigating a lot and still have more to read.
Yep. Well, let's do the vote, and then we could continue discussions about speed tables and what may be better. But I agree the stop signs. I'd like to put a curb across the road.
Yeah. You know, just for the record, when I had the Yukon Traffic Survey done, one of their things is, you know, I guess they have to be five hundred feet from any, any stop sign or intersection. So, you know, that, that's not going to help that part of it. Just to, just to let you know, but that's just through the research that we did, that's where they had designated that we could actually put them. That's why we came up with three.
What about crosswalk? Can that be erased, like, like at the New Milford Green? Can that be?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
You know, a raised walk.
The, the, the thing was different there because Hemlock and Rocky Mountain do not line up.
Right.
They're an offset, there's an offset to it, so they felt that it couldn't be done there. You know, can we still do it? I'm not sure. Because they basically sign off on what we do. There's like a traffic, a higher traffic authority.
Well, that's something we can pursue and just to get more info so that we.
Of course.
You know, like anything, the research is done, and we know what we're talking about. Before.
All right, I, I will have this survey out next week.
Okay.
Okay, and we're just going to say, you know, do you support speed bumps on Wellers Bridge?
That's it. That's enough.
Okay.
Speed bumps or tables, or, I mean, do you want to be?
Yeah, you could say speed bumps or speed tables, so we're not stuck.
Yeah.
When we make a decision, they go, wow, we, we didn't vote for that, you know?
Exactly, yeah.
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 Okay, I'm glad I asked the question then. Good.
Yeah. I'm glad Kim answered.
Thank you, Kim.
Anytime.
Okay, so that's going to be it, and then hopefully then for next meeting, we'll have some more stats to go over, and we can continue the conversation.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, next order of business, North Street Lot Town Meeting.
Okay. I'm going to go. I'm going to make a motion to correct the agenda, because it should say, instead of just North Street Lot, Town Meeting, it said, purchase of North Street Lot. Because that's what this would, this next topic would be about.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, perfect. It's been added.
I think this is a great deal, and I think this town's really going to support it.
Yeah, I think so too. I think it's good.
The questions we may have are, what are we going to do with it?
Right.
Why are we buying this? What are we going to do?
Yep.
I, I've heard a lot of concern about putting affordable housing there, which it could be, because it's allowed.
Yep.
But my attitude is this, it's a great deal. I have no idea what we may put there, but it's the center of town, and it would be a mistake not to buy it and let it sit.
Yep.
And when something came up, you get the vote again.
Right.
They're not making more land. They're not making more land, and there's only so much down here, and, you know, we always talk about preserving the character and all, and I think this is a step in that direction, and, you know, as the needs of the town change, we can address. If there's an opportunity that we feel is good, we can bring it back forward, but I agree.
Yep.
So we need to make a motion to bring it to Town Meeting, and I do have a statement, because Patrick's not allowed to, well, because he's part of this, and so Russ and I, I think you, Russ, you and I have to be the ones that vote on this. I don't know that, Patrick, can you vote on it?
I will be voting on it.
Oh, all right. So I have this statement. All right. With regard to the purchase of the North Street Lot, the selectmen hereby deem that a special town meeting is necessary, and accordingly, the selectmen shall cause a special town meeting to be duly noticed and convened on or about November ninth, twenty-twenty-two, with notice and warning to be substantially as follows. Okay, this is all lawyer-y. To consider and act upon an authorization for the first selectman, Patrick Roy, to negotiate, contract for, and purchase real property consisting of two acres more or less on North Street in Roxbury, Connecticut, known as Assessor's Map nineteen, Lot thirty-four, owned by the successor trustees of the Charles C. Squire Revocable Trust dated July twenty-eight, two thousand eight, for consideration in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus conveyance taxes, associated transaction costs and apportionments related to the purchase, and to ratify the actions of the first selectman heretofore taken to accomplish said purchase.
Good job, Kim.
You guys are the best.
Is that your motion?
That's the motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We move forward. Okay, so.
Onto fun stuff.
Get the public notice into the paper first thing in the morning. And we will have a meeting at seven o'clock here at Town Hall, November ninth, if that works for everybody. And we'll move, move on from there. Okay, anything else on North Street?
And that's going to be in person, right? It's an in-person meeting, yes.
Yes. Okay, now to.
When is that, Pat?
November ninth, seven P M.
Seven, okay. Is that a Friday?
Next Wednesday.
Okay, next Wednesday. All right.
The week from tomorrow.
Today's Tuesday.
Right.
A week from tomorrow. Yeah.
So next Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm the one with the long day, Ross, here. Come on. You got driven like five hundred miles today.
Trying to trick me.
People were keeping me up last night. I don't know what you're talking about, anyway. Okay, so now some report outs, Town Hall upgrades, public work upgrades.
You missed number C.
Yeah, you missed the most important thing in the meeting. You must have been up late.
Hang on, I got the wrong one then. I have the wrong.
Sherman Park Boat Launch?
Yeah.
Well, I had, I, my, my apologies. I have that under other business, because I have a previous copy. My apologies.
That's all right. Sherman Park Boat Launch. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, so we met with C T, Department of Public Works, a guy named Brian Wood. He said great things about you, Russ.
Thank you.
And they were very encouraging of all the work that we, you know, would do down there, or, or even moving forward. Because I had, I had actually, what, what we're doing is we're repairing the ramp right now. There's a drop-off of about two feet off the downside of it. So actually, I went out there last week, Thursday, and pressure washed it with a fire hose and a fire truck. It was a pretty exciting day for me. Anyway, so like, got all the algae off, and, and from my understanding, they might have been working on that a little bit today, but I think it's that Sherman Park is underutilized. I, I love that place down there. I want people to be able to use it. They had brought up putting gravel on the sides, or some kind of stone on the sides, just to kind of hold it together, but widen the area. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, what they wanted to see is a little bit more accessibility for kayakers, anybody with a canoe. You know, there should be more area. He proposed, and this isn't something for now, but we can look at this for next year, of building a concrete platform, and we could actually have a dock that came off next to the boat ramp, which would be phenomenal.
That would be awesome.
Totally amazing.
Love to see that area cleared up. I'm excited about it. You know, the Sherman family gave that land to the town years ago to be used as a park, not to be used as, you know, what it is unfortunately, kind of a, a, a holding area.
Yeah, place to drop off stumps. We abused that. We did. I admit it. I was, I, I've been bitching about it. Barbara doesn't want to hear me anymore, but I, I complained a long time, and then we did make progress, because we built a trail down there, which is a nice loop trail. And it's great that EverSource, it was C L P at the time, did away with the gravel mine.
Yeah.
They were gravel mining down there, and they, didn't they give the property to the Land Trust? I think they did.
The, the side on the other side, the park that was actually the south side. Sherman Park is kind of a strip. It goes right out to the point of where the corner is on the Chappag, and then just south of it, there's one whole line that takes you to the Southberry Line. That's all the Roxbury Land Trusts.
Right.
Right, they gave that to them, and I thought that it's a gem, and we, we haven't taken advantage of it, so I'm glad to hear you, Pat, and I know Kim is the one who wanted this on the agenda. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear both of you saying what I've been saying for twenty years. The Shermans blessed us with Tierney Preserved, and, and, and they didn't, they didn't give it to us to use as a town place to put stumps, and we used to put all our road millings. Not, not good. I'm glad that's all stopped, but I'd love to see that park made into what it can be. It really could be a special place. It really can be.
Well, if you guys, if you guys both agree, I'm going to keep going, so.
I, I say we do a GoFundMe page.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you, people, you know, because kayaking and canoeing has become very big.
Yeah.
Doesn't necessarily need to be for motorboats, because you got Southberry right down the street with a state-of-the-art ramp for that. But, but right now, it's not really good for much unless you want to hole in your canoe.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. You know, I kept an article, and I'm sorry, I didn't pull it out for tonight, but I think, Patrick, I know you had seen it. It was in the paper about Bridgewater coming, having some arrangement with the, was it First?
It was with First Light EverSource to give them that actual access, because the access itself, right up along the Chappag, because I don't know if it's considered Little Anona, you would know better, Russ, that direct area right, you know, across the water. But if we wanted to have access down to the water, especially on that cove. So what they had done is they had had First Light property, and they basically gave it over to the town of Bridgewater, so they could use it for around their town. We have a similar situation. If you look on a, on an assessor's map, Chase Park goes right over, you know, right where the rocks are, just south of Minor Bridge, and then that whole cove that's just across the river from the boat launch is all First Light area. So that possibly could be used for more accessibility, because I know a lot of people love to go fishing there. It's a great cove. But I would just like to utilize that, and, and, and if anything, honor the Sherman family for their great donation, and I'd like to, I'd like to protect it. We'll, we'll find other areas in town to stage wood. I'd like it to be closer to the center of town anyway. And then we have some areas down below where the salt shed is, where we can stage, you know, three-quarter inch stone, or, or three-eighths inch stone, or, or whatever it may be, topsoil-processed wood chips.
For the future, Franny's place.
That's.
That's, that, that, the back, well, the back of that salt shed would connect if that kept going.
I know.
So I, 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 you know, without moving dirt or anything, but just utilizing the space that we already have, I think that we have the room to do that. So I'd like to work towards getting all of that debris down, and then at some point, you know, okay, maybe a GoFundMe page, but make an investment to open that up to a field and get rid of the debris, and just bring a bulldozer in and, and level it off if we can, or at least just make it something that the Sherman family can come back to, because they still check on it. Something they can be proud of. I think that would be a, a great, great.
Absolutely.
Achievement by our board.
You should put a plaque up too for them.
Yeah, I agree. Because that's never been done. I know.
Maybe like a gazebo.
Well, that's where originally, we talked about the gazebo going there, but I think someplace where like a little pavilion type or gazebo or something where there's place to sit and, and enjoy. But my question about the water, is there a way to have access just even visually to the water from Sherman Park? I, I don't know.
That's going to, I, I will, I, I've learned that I got to go to Wetlands for that, and I will, because I, I think some selective cutting, there's some neat pine trees and stuff that need to stay, but if, it, you know, especially with that cove looking across the river to the old train bed and the granite bridge, I mean, that's just stunning, and you only get to see it by the water. So, I mean, just, there's already a clear area, but some more access is down. I would, I would definitely go to inland wetlands and, and request permission to any selected removal.
Yeah, it might be that there's some kind of a trail that can also, you know, a little, little spots where people can picnic, or, you, you know, I mean, I, I think.
You can, you can make it a beautiful place.
Yeah.
I mean, in Bridgewater, what, what's the name of that preserve on the top of Hud Hill? It's a nature conservancy. Janet something. But there's a little gazebo down in there, right on a little pond, and it, it's beautiful. It is.
Yeah. Well, from my understanding, just, just adjacent to the boat launch where it is now, years ago, there was a beach there. That was a sandy beach. At one time.
I don't know.
Well, the problem was back then, the way the river curves around, all the debris end up in that corner. Yeah, so that was the problem with it. But, I mean, all that's there is like real tough, high grass and like a swampy area. That's all that's really left there now. So we could definitely do some more clearing, and we could start heading into, as we head into spring, before we have new growth, just even cutting back a little bit more here and there. The undergrowth would probably just open up that area a little bit more. So as long as you guys are on board, I appreciate the support. Thank you very, very much. I'm proud of this, so.
Totally. How, how can I help?
And, you know, that would actually be a fun special meeting to go walk that.
Yeah.
I agree. And honestly, I.
Go down there and have a meeting.
Well, yes, no, but I mean, I think that would be fun to, you know, while we can see through and just to kind of some Saturday morning and good.
Great idea.
I'm absolutely up for that. I think there's a lot of, yep, we have the ability.
And let everybody in town know who wants to come. And let everybody in town know who wants to come.
Exactly.
You got it.
And no drinking till after the meeting.
Right.
That's great. Um, okay, now on to uh, Town Hall upgrades, public work upgrades. Um, we are continuing to do the computer upgrades at Town Hall and now Public Works as well. Butch has a new screen. He has a new desk and his office has been painted now. Um, we still have, I, I still have uh, five bathrooms to address at some point. We have four bathrooms here at Town Hall plus, you know, the public works to redo that one. Um, something that I started looking at, you know, last, last month, I announced that we had uh, been awarded the steep grant for paving. So I started to look a little bit more beyond that. So I, I, I've reached out and uh, I have not received a price back, but we have a diesel tank that's in the ground, uh, that will have to be removed in two thousand twenty-nine. Um, as we get closer to that tank removal, more inspections happen and it becomes more complicated. Every year closer you get to its expiration.
Yeah, you gotta have a test it.
Correct. So before we get to the paving, I'm gonna get a price um, on putting new tanks in. Um, removing the diesel tank in the ground, um, mimicking uh, a little bit of what they have for Washington. And it's one six thousand gallon tank that's split as four thousand diesel, two thousand unleaded. Right now, we have a thousand uh, uh, diesel in the ground, uh, and then we have a five hundred gallon uh, unleaded tank in the back. So the unleaded tank could be repurposed as heating oil for Public Works. And then we put in a new uh, six thousand gallon tank for diesel.
But it, but isn't there a gas tank in the ground?
That's what would come up. The, it was the diesel tank that has to come up.
Right, but the, so you're saying the gas tank has got a longer life?
No, the gas tank is above ground. So it doesn't need to come up.
I, I, I remember two underground tanks, but it was a long time ago.
There's septic and there's diesel on that side.
No, when we, yeah, okay. No, we did that. Wow. That was a long time ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, it was, I hate to say it like this, but it was before the turn of the century.
Great, great. Thanks, Pat. It was, yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's a good idea to get it out of the ground no matter what.
Yeah.
It's a liability.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, my thought, my thought process, sorry, okay, sorry. Um, I don't wanna pave it and then have to rip it up.
Right.
I mean, that would be awful. So.
So just, we gotta get it out anyway. Get it out.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm working on that and that's probably, well, that's going to be a six-figure uh, thing, but luckily we have some offsets on some other money, plus the, the steep grant funding on Public Works plus paving.
A, a six-figure thing to remove a tank and replace it?
This is for removing the old, putting in, buying the new tank, plus the containment system around it, moving the tank, the other tank. Um, the one in Washington was uh, around a hundred thousand dollars, if I understand.
Yeah, wow.
Do we need a four thousand gallon?
You know, I, I don't, I don't know. I'm kind of mimicking with them, um, and you know, the way gas prices are now, right now, it would be great if we had a little bit of a surplus and then got it when we, you know, when we could get it and, and hold on to it for a while. And I mean, it wouldn't last all winter. Um, we'd still have to refill it because right now we're refilling it like once a month. Wow. So we would just be able to push that off.
Okay.
That makes sense. We have it bigger, you know, for the.
So I was, and I'm just trying to think and moving forward. And now it'll be up above the ground, you know, so you can continue to, you know, maintain it and.
And the system they have in Washington is very nice. I mean, it was, it was very easy to get to, was out of the way. You know, but not out of the way enough where it was inconvenient for the trucks.
Yeah. So it's kind of really an exploratory phase. I wanna kind of see what, you know, learn as much as I can and then uh, at that point, we'll probably get it, have to go out for an R F P. Um, and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll price it out that way when we get there. Um, and then next is to uh, start working on the uh, the uh, pole barn shed that's uh, just to the side of it. We can start putting power on it. Um, still waiting for the garage doors, but we knew those were gonna be four months out. Um, and there we go. That's about it for uh, Town Hall and Public Works.
So I have, I just have a question. So working on that shed, um, because that's money that's left over because of all the money saved on the renovation of the garage, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, the, the Public Works has, has gained, um, I mean, we're probably about thirty thirty-six thousand right now of the hundred thousand. So that was always the plan to kind of continue that. Um, now we just have additional funds so we can do more.
Yeah, that's great.
It, it, luckily cleaning it up and getting the new tools and, and everything that they have, um, it went quickly and it went cost effectively, so.
Yeah.
I'm pretty excited as far as we've gone with as little as we spent, so. Um, okay, Bridge Culverts update. So uh, three, three just quick little points. Davenport is done.
I know.
Not completely done, but the road is open.
Yeah, I drove through it. It's beautiful.
There's still some signage that's missing. Uh, I walked, uh, walked it with the state yesterday uh, in the morning. Um, everybody was very pleased uh, the way it came out. Um, the next thing that's gonna happen is a uh, as part of this contract, um, is an artist comes out to paint the stone to make it look natural, um, which I'm actually excited about. Um, other than that, there were no additional costs. Um, we came in exactly on budget. The time was delayed due suit to some, you know, supply chain errors, but uh, I gotta say, you know, when it's all said and done, N J R did a very, very professional job and uh, kudos to N J R. They did a great one.
Great.
So uh, Botsford Hill is also done. I'm very excited to say it's all been completely rebuilt. Um, wonderful job. Uh, as of yesterday, Squire Road is paved.
I saw it.
Excellent.
Today.
It came out great.
Yeah.
The one thing that I'm waiting for is uh, guardrails. Um, and those are.
What kind of guardrails? Are you getting those silvery ugly things or?
No, we're doing wood.
Oh, great, great.
We talked about this before. Yep.
Okay.
So actually, I, I was having problems. There's a couple people, the wood are hard right now to get because of supply chain errors. Um, and then I had gone with different companies. Um, right now, I, I couldn't uh, on the, the ten inch by four inch, I couldn't get a, a crash rating in him. Um, and then come to find out from the manufacturer, they do not offer a crash rating. I found that out this morning. Um, so we are going only with a crash rated wood on steel post uh, guardrail. Um, so we've actually now because of that have just selected, you know, our contract and I can just forward, forward with that, but it is gonna be a little bit more money to get a crash rated. But I, I wouldn't feel comfortable not putting that up there.
Right. No, I agree. And that's a big rock, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, but we're definitely.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, so when will the, the, the road be repainted and with the, the stop sign line and all of that was, is that?
That's the only, that's the only thing left. I'm not sure, uh, um, hopefully the guardrail company will call, will uh, be able to put this together. I don't have an ETA now because we just, because of the information today, it's all scrapped and I have to go back to the other company. So I had actually found that out this morning that I didn't get any of the crash rating information. Um, and you know, I'm, it, it can't be a decorative fence. It's gotta be functional.
Right.
So, so that'll all have to uh, still be worked out. Um, but we're looking at probably at least three to four weeks out.
Okay.
At this point, based on what they said, if we can get it this year. Um, but we do have the temporary post, so it's safe at least for now.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, okay, so now Julie, do you have that attachment you could put up on the screen?
I do.
Yeah, I have it up on my computer. They did a good job.
I actually have it um, in front of me too.
I have it as well. I mean, just for public, for public record, you wanna put it up or do you wanna just go up there?
Yeah.
Probably should.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so um, this is uh, our completed survey. These are all state-recognized bridges that are in the town. Um, the only thing is the uh, ones that we've already done have been removed. Um, this is basically a to-do list. This is ranking in order. Um, the, the most severe, um, and then you kind of work your way down. Um, so now we're going to look at each of these independently, see what we can repair. I also had this, uh, the way this goes, if you work your way across, um, you can see the life expectancy and then rehabilitation cost, uh, which we kind of projected, uh, and then what the rehabilitation life is and then the replacement cost. And then based on the uh, uh, expected lifespan of seventy-five. So some of these can be, you know, fixed and repaired. Um, and that's what we're, you know, always gonna be our first option, especially if it's something that's granite, that's been here since the forties and continues the character of our town. Um, but in, in some situations, we may be looking at a full replacement, but um, you know, one of our commitments as this group was to uh, get this survey done, so I'm pleased to say that we're uh, kind of at that point and now we can start hitting them off one by one. Um, nothing scares me about this. I almost had the exact same list uh, before this actually. Um, so you know, like I said, it's nothing new. Um, and then there's others.
The Frisbee Road isn't ours, right? We gave that away.
It says N A because it was, it'd come up on all their reports and it's not ours. That's a private road. That is not ours.
Okay.
We gave it away. We gave it away ten years ago. They requested that we not, uh, would have discontinued as a town road.
Correct.
They wanted to go from the bridge on and we said, no, if you want it, you take it from the, from Davenport on.
Right.
The bridge, the bridge is yours.
So the, the thing is that bridge is in bad shape and they, they will probably have to do something sooner than later. Um, was the.
They should be notified of that.
Correct.
A very good point. That's an excellent point.
It's not a town road. It's not a town structure and we can't be given tax dollars to help people
Yep.
who, who own eighty acres or whatever they own here. It's a beautiful property.
It gorgeous, gorgeous. I've been up there a couple times.
They should be aware that, you know, in uh,
This is ten plus or minus, right?
In ten plus or minus, you're gonna have to spend fifty-five grand. Start saving now and don't come to the state, don't come to the town for it.
Well, my guess is in ten years, the price will be a whole lot different, so.
They might be better off doing it now.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is, um, this is not inclusive of any of the culverts that we need to do. I mean.
Right, like Bacon Road.
Bacon Road, correct. So that's, that's not considered a, a state road or a state bridge. Um, nor is it good on any of this. Um, so anyway, so then after that rehabilitation cost, you have that, um, and then there's next to replacement cost, you'll also see the fifty percent. Uh, so that would be based on a local bridge program. So we'd be responsible for the one thirty. Um, as you guys know, the rehabilitation, um, because I think it's now public, but um, around thirty-three thousand was what Botsford costs, just so we can put it to perspective.
Right.
Um, so a lot of those are a little inflated on the uh, rehabilitation costs in my, my opinion.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Any questions on that?
Nope. Great job.
All right, I got a to-do list.
You do.
Great.
Um, okay, and uh, uh, budget capital, um, we have two trucks that we're still waiting for. Um, one being rebuilt, which is the two thousand one uh, Mack uh, Truck Eight, and we should have that uh, as a December ETA. Um, and I also have uh, Truck Five that we've had a uh, kind of a standing order since uh, early last spring uh, to replace the two thousand twelve uh, Chevy uh, with a Ford. Um, and that is in production, again, hoping to get it by Christmas time. Um, so it'll be ready for plowing both trucks this uh, moving forward into this, into this winter.
Okay.
Um, I have no moving that's the next order of business unless there's any questions. I have no reports from Fire Marshal or Resident Trooper, probably just because it's the first. I just haven't received them.
Yep.
Okay.
Other business?
No, great job. Really.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have one thing.
Yeah.
Um, special event permits has been brought to my attention. Um, and I had kind of worked with uh, John Cody. We've been looking at other towns for special events so that we would actually have a process for, you know, if somebody wants to have an event, maybe something at Munson Meadow. Um, we've had a lot of requests um, for different things and we have no policy in it. So that's gonna be going to zoning uh, this month. Uh, I felt that it was something that just zoning should handle that, just to refine the regulations. Um, just to codify that process so that everybody's official. Um, so that's gonna get pushed to uh, zoning, so I'll look forward to uh, wonderful things from zoning from that. So thank you.
All right.
Okay.
All right. Any other business?
Nope, but next time you have a party, better invite me. That was fun.
I do my best, Russ. It was though, it was no birthday party, but it was still good.
It was good.
You got it.
Have a great night, everybody.
All right, thank you guys.
We gotta make a motion adjourn. I, I'll make a motion adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. See you, Russ. See you, Kim. Thank you, Julie.
Bye.
You're welcome. Thank you. Good night.